My daughter works indoors. She's not going in. They were having them go in like twice a month, starting this lovely down. They would shut in so they pulled everybody back up. I'd like to call the meeting to a halt. If you could take a moment, silence please. Please rise to the flag.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to the board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cablevision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, town library, and all district schools. Ms. Francisco?
Mrs. Romeo? Here. Mrs. Kedelman? Here. Mr. Fongway?
Here.
Mrs. Blyer?
Here.
Mrs. Moreno?
Here.
Mr. Pinsky?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Here. Dr. Anamo, your report.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our October meeting. We're going to start off with our 2020 National Merit Scholarship Recognition Winners. We typically invite students to the board meeting to receive these awards, but in light of the pandemic, we didn't think it was a great idea this year. I do want to recognize them at the meeting now. Two of our high school students, Axel Malatek, received a letter of commendation for outstanding performance on the PSAT 2019, and Michael Pagano, letter of commendation for outstanding performance on the PSAT, and also the Rural and Small Town Scholar Award for excellence in academic achievement. So, thank you, boys. Congratulations. Next up, we received a plaque just a little while ago, which is our award that makes West Wilford a 2020 to 2024 New Jersey State District Character. This is something we've been moving forward for probably the past seven, eight, nine years, maybe. Mrs. Novak, can you just give a brief overview?
Yeah, so this is the... This plaque is, I don't know. I would say a culmination of many years of work on behalf of our staff, our students, our administrators, board support, and the community. We began that journey in 2014 with a number of schools applying for district or school of character, and little by little, we've been able to, you know, achieve and make gains in the, you know, the metrics that the organizations, which is the New Jersey Association for Social Emotional Learning, and also Character.org, two organizations that monitor and come and assess and make recommendations and, you know, help build a successful character ed program. And, you know, it's nice to talk about it now with, you know, reflecting back on one of our pre-pandemic goals and be able to, you know, put a little bright spot on what the district accomplished when we put our mind to it. So, thanks.
So, when people ask, "And what does that mean?" It means, well, it's a four-year award. It doesn't mean we have zero HIBs ever. It just means this is a district that cares about children. There's emphasis on children, which is important. Back-to-school update is going to be a PowerPoint. I'll skip over that for a moment. School security update. We have a school security meeting coming up, I believe, in November. In a few weeks, we will go over some new information. However, you know, the community should know we are still doing our school security drills. We are still doing our fire drills. We're actually doubling them up this year because we have to do one for each cohort. So, we normally do one fire drill, one school security drill per month. Now, because we still have students in the two cohorts, we have to do one for each group in each category. So, essentially, it's four security drills each month. For November, we're going to be doing some full notification drill where we will be testing our emergency broadcast system, hunting well, things like that. So, be on the lookout for that, but this is still something we are focusing on. If you look ahead at the agenda to the operation of finance, there is two large projects being improved tonight with our person traps or security vest tools at Macapin and at the high school. So, hopefully, that can be improved tonight. We just put them at Westbrook not so long ago, and we're working our way through our schools, move by move. Ideally, we can do this all at once, but money being a factor means we have to keep on them. So, we don't always announce every time we have a school security initiative, so if it is kept confidential, this obviously is going to partly keep quiet. It's a great new security vest tool at our two largest schools, so we're looking forward to that. Next up, handle with care. Can you just do a brief overview on our new handle with care program? Not new, but...
Yes, so the Attorney General Raywall created a program called Handle with Care. I'm sure the community may be familiar with it. It's planned to go into effect in December of 2020. Basically, the goal is to provide schools with notice of children that are experiencing adverse childhood experiences, such as if the police get involved with any violence in the home, abuse in the home, possibly the death of an immediate family member due to a potential overdose. And the process will be that the law enforcement will then contact the school, which you'll see on the agenda how be the point of contact, but then, obviously, we'll have teams of people in each of the buildings that would be responding to that. They only notice us. They don't provide us with the details of the incident. It's just so that we can handle the child with a little bit more care in the schools, such as maybe providing extra support, reteaching lessons. We might send them over to a nurse or the counselor to meet with the student. So, it just basically allows better practices when you're responding to students that have experienced something in the home that normally a district would not know about. So, this is kind of a new initiative, but yet we've already been doing a lot of those practices when we are in a rare situation. But now, the law enforcement, the local PD, will be, they will be required to inform us. So, we're kind of getting ahead of it. It has to be fully implemented in September. There is a training November 17th, which we will be attending, and then, from there, starting in January, it is required. So, that's basically what it's about.
Thank you very much. Just a brief update. I know we talked a little bit over summer, and we'll be talking for a while about our math programs in district. Just want to focus for a short while on Macapin. We're making tremendous strides there. Full of our numbers are enrollment in our higher-level math classes at Macapin School, and this year, we have 112 students enrolled in pre-algebra in seventh grade. Three years ago, that number was at 50th grade. So, it's more than doubled, and in that time, the seventh-grade class size has gone down. So, with more students in a smaller class that are taking pre-algebra in seventh grade, those students will move into algebra in eighth grade, which there have been a lot of studies over the years that have linked completing algebra in eighth grade with higher academic achievements in high school and college again. So, our push to have our students complete algebra by the time they graduate Macapin is moving forward. We had our first cohort last year to do this, and now they're taking geometry at Macapin. So, when they get to high school, they'll be starting off as freshman year with Algebra II. So, if you look at high school math, its five core subjects is algebra, geometry, Algebra II, precalculus, and calculus A. Those are five higher-level math courses, and if you wait till you're freshman year to take algebra, you don't get to that fifth year. Four year the high school is five years of math. So, the flow process is if you can complete the first course in that C-120 is algebra, if you complete that eighth grade, you then can reach calculus. Twelfth grader in high school, which we know most of your highly competitive schools are going to look for that on a transcript when you're applying for colleges. So, tremendous strides there. We're looking forward to updating the board in the PowerPoint. Second class, the Highlander Echo is our school newspaper, and congratulations. This is from last spring. We just got the notification in the mail. The Americans Classic Press Association presents first-place award to the Highlander Echo newspaper from West Millford High School. This is for the 2019/20 school. Congratulations to them. Mr. Winston, I'm going to put the PowerPoint out, and we're going to go back to the third bullet point, back-to-school update. Linda, Terry, and Andy, guys.
Oh, I got this over there.
So, welcome. Obviously, we're just finishing our first month of in-school, or two months of schooling. Month one, September, we were all virtual. October, we brought back our students on a hybrid model, and this is sort of a look, you know, this is a look backwards and a look ahead as well, as to where we are, where we were, and where we're going. So, how do we analyze this? I hope you can see the colors, but the state releases a simple tally, a COVID activity level index. It's made up of specific metrics that we have to follow, and they rank everybody in four categories, low risk to very high risk. It's color-coded on the state website. I tried to replicate that here. The data they look at is the case rate for 100,000 residents, and that's by region. So, we're in the North West Region, there's more Southeast, Southeast, et cetera. There's something called COVID-like illness. I'm not 100% certain how they're tackling that, but that's on their website as well. The positivity rate is simply the percentage of tests on any given day that are positive. We'd like to see that as low as possible. If it's too high, it means there's too many people with the virus, or there's not enough testing. The healthcare capacity, this is what our healthcare system can absorb at any one time. So, we're not designed to have everybody get sick at once. That's not the way our healthcare system works. We need people to get sick over time, not all at once. So, we have hospital beds, is there room in the ICU? We have ventilators, we have doctors and nurses, et cetera, to care for these patients. And right now, we've moved from the low-risk to the moderate-risk section, putting the whole state in the yellow for moderate risk. This year, it's tough to see the red, I think, but this is the number of cases. I use Wednesday for the start of the school year, which is July 1st. I pick Wednesdays because Sundays, Monday, you sometimes have a lower-than-average number because testing facilities close on Sundays and sometimes they're closed on Saturdays. So, I use Wednesday as the middle of the week, and it was roughly flat for two months, and now, we're seeing a sharp spike, and this number tomorrow will probably be up here somewhere on the 28th. So, the last two months, this is a sharp spike. You're going to see that same curve in the next two slides. This is the estimated rate of transmission, and it's, again, the same thing. It's roughly flat here, and then, it's straight up for about two months. And same thing with the positivity rate, roughly flat and then, straight up here. So, we're trending in the wrong direction. You're hearing a lot more cases, anecdotally, friends, friends of friends, family members, messages from me, nicksels from the communities, the counties. We know that COVID cases are back on the rise. The American hit its all-time high, I think, a day or two ago since the pandemic began. So, return to schools, this is what we're doing well right now. We were able to open on October 1st. We're open five days a week, five full days a week, not five half-days, and our students receive instruction in-person for essentially five days every two weeks, three days one week, two the next. We're in the process of having successful fall athletic seasons and marching band seasons, which, again, just outdoor activities. But we are offering five days a week in-person instruction for select groups of students, special needs students, or reading or on-course music in the primary grades. Challenges to move forward, staffing, always an issue, safely increasing the number of students attending school five days a week. So, it's our goal to have everybody back every day, but we have to do it safely. I think our first priority should be our special needs students. Our CATA5 special needs students are already in for five days a week, are not six to 12 or not. So, we're going to try to figure out a way to start rolling them in little by little to increase in that number. I don't think we can go from 50% capacity to 100% like right away. It wouldn't be safe. It wouldn't be possible socially distanced or it's got classrooms, but it's in. We have to look forward to it. So, we're looking at this year in six-week increments. October 1st through November 15th is the first six-week period of time where parents selected in-person instruction or virtual instruction. The deadline to change that is November, October 30th, or November 1st, I think. So, this Sunday is the deadline. So, parents will notify us this week if they want to change from in-person to virtual or reverse. So, as these numbers change, we'll start realizing we may have extra space in certain classrooms in certain programs. So, once we get that numbers, those numbers on Monday, we'll be able to evaluate what we can do and what we can't do. All right, another challenge is maintaining social distance on the bus, in the classrooms, the cafeteria, et cetera. We're going to bring back indoor, in-person, socially-distanced music instruction at Macca and the high school. That will start at the beginning of the second marking period, which is right around November 9th after the teachers convention. We are purchasing some additional equipment, essentially socks or sleeves for the end of the instruments to sort of suppress the respiratory droplets. So, we're looking forward to that, because right now, our music is only outdoors and it's only after school. And then, we're looking forward to a safe winter sports season, which is all indoors. We have indoor music marching band in the winter, which is more percussion-based, I believe, and we have school musicals, which are in the spring, but they rehearse all winter. So, there's a lot of challenges we have to do. How do we do that? Cross-country wasn't that hard. They're all spaced out. Wrestling might be more challenging. So, how do we do that is one of our challenges. Change just came this past weekend, it's Friday or Saturday. So, the first is CDC, then New Jersey Department of Health just changed how they define a close contact. So, if students or staff or anybody in the school is six feet apart, as you notice you all are now, if somebody tests positive for COVID, nobody else has to quarantine at home if you're six feet apart. If you're less than that, you're three feet apart, and if one student gets COVID, the people who are within that six-foot radius or square, they then have to go home and quarantine at home for two. So, it's a typical close contact, and here's the change that just came this past week. We used to say six, less than six feet for more than 10 minutes. Now, it's going to be less than six feet for 15 minutes. However, it's a cumulative amount of time over a 24-hour period. So, it's six feet, less than six feet for more than 15 minutes over a full day. And I think full day is really a rolling 24-hour period. That's how I interpret that. So, approximately 29% of our students are on the old virtual option. The remaining 70% of students are split roughly equally between A-days and B-days. It doesn't mean that every single class is split 50-50. Some classes, it's a much higher load on A-day than B-day just because people at the high school switch classes and you just might have a large class. So, we have had positive cases in our district, some students, some staff, but we've had a limited need to quarantine large numbers of people. We had one issue on a bus where we had combined two bus routes, and one student was COVID-positive, and because we had so many kids on the bus, we then had to quarantine a large number of students around that person. So, we subsequently, we're working on now, we're communicating better with parents. We're letting them know ahead of time and best we can that two bus routes will be changed starting next Tuesday because we're short on staff. But the idea is that if we bring back everybody, it's going to be very difficult to socially distance more than safely. So, in a regular classroom setting, if you have 22, 24 in a classroom, you could have eight to 14 close contacts per class, and then, each student's going to have seven at a time. So, one student could take out 50 to 100 other students if they're too crowded. So, the one goal is to bring back more students, but the other goal is to maintain safety, and not just student safety, staff safety as well. I don't know that anybody would feel too comfortable. Nobody's last couple of teaching a classroom of nine, if they were, they had 24. So, that matters too. So, we're looking to do, give all our students the best education possible, but in the safest manner possible. So, we're going to reevaluate our numbers next Monday to see where our virtual numbers fall for the second window, which will be November 16th through December 31st, and we should have that by beginning next week. Any other words, questions?
I do. You gave the 29%, but can we get a picture of in-person versus virtual for each level, like elementary, middle, and high school?
There's something on your desk. It's high school.
All right, I didn't see it. They don't have it for high school.
It could be on there.
That's on the agenda?
Yeah, so high school's kind of the top left, I think. Thanks for... So, we're also going to redo the aroma report again every month. We tried to squeeze some more, the virtual numbers on there. It just, the font was off. It was just hard to read, so we're going to probably make it a multi-page document, I think. So, it was hard to read all on one page. The font was just too small.
I have something else. I'm just wondering, you know, you're talking about the high school musical, and I might sound like an oger, but Broadway is closed through March. I'm wondering, you know, these kids are going to do all this practicing, they're going to be on top of each other. Who's going to come to the show?
Maybe they'll be able to do it like to your name.
Yes.
I like to, either at school, then you're in the virtual.
Yeah, a lot of them are doing it.
Okay.
Virtual competitions.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of virtual stuff this year for band competition.
Oh, I know the bands, too.
So, it might be something like that. The bigger concern could be the rehearsals.
The expense, I'm thinking of being...
You might have to spread your rehearsal time where you don't have a full ensemble every day. You may have to really break that up into smaller cohorts.
I mean, I feel very strongly that for kids who are in the theater production and in the arts, this is their Super Bowl. If we're letting, if we're letting football play, we're wrestling face-to-face, we're doing basketball, if the governor feels that that's okay, then it should be okay for kids that that's their thing, you know? And they, and some of our students that are seniors, you know, they're looking forward to college, and that's part of their resume going to college. I think we have to be equal to everyone.
Senior special for actors, sometimes they get the more featured roles when they're in upper class, maybe, than when they're in special class. So, do you have a lot of kids looking forward to that?
Alex, you talked about Macapin and the high school. Maybe it was the previous slide around, I don't know where it was. Seven classes, right, seven classes. Yeah, so I understand that, you know, there's, it could take out 50 or however many kids K through five, you've got, they're in the same classroom all day long, right? So, you wouldn't have, you might just have to, if something happened, worst-case scenario is you might just close that classroom.
Right. Because they're contained. They get their specials by themselves, they're not going to separate part of the music. It's just their own classroom.
And there's special teachers coming into their class, correct?
It could be both. They could be coming in, but they go out to gym. So, but they go as a cohort, you know, so it could be a class that shuts down, not the school because it's only 20 students. Whereas, so, Macapin, they're constantly switching their cohorts.
So, is there maybe more of an opportunity to try and, if we continue to do well, maybe through the rest of this month, November, is there more of an opportunity to bring those kids in five kids together?
Well, one thing I've realized is that we have a lot of flexibility within our plans. You know, we're not getting a ton of guidance from tripping, but, which is hard in some regards, but it's good in another way that we tend to have the flexibility to increase K to two or whatever the grades are that we're in space. So, I think we have enough flexibility. I just want to see what our numbers are virtually for the next six weeks.
Yeah, I think they're adaptable. I mean, I know we've talked numerous times about the flexible shield to win a test. Kids going to mass, you kind of have that double protection table that these teachers have in the back on the flexible last there, but I think maybe will help it. And again, we also know, I think this was brought up a couple of months ago, how those kids are probably, not that they can't get COVID, but you look at the statistics so far, it looks like you've got a big spike in mass recently. I think the key thing is teachers kind of being careful and doing what they need to do to keep the class safe, but to see teachers doing, you know, listen to some of the things you're saying about some of the double work that teachers have to do.
Yeah.
I would mention everything, except the first thing I just want to say is thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the administration, the staff. The fact that, see, maintaining safety is number one. I have a lot of friends, family that work in other districts all across the state, and I am so proud to be on this board of education. And I'm just very proud of the way that it's rolled out, the way things are going, I mean, the transparency that I'm seeing, like, I'm just very proud of everything that's happening there. With that, I have some questions. I don't expect that they would all be answered tonight, but they're things that I definitely would like to know. To raise a point about elementary, yeah, it feels like that you would just need to quarantine that class, but is it still, unless there were two unrelated cases, is there a chance that a school would close if there were two unrelated cases at an elementary school?
Well, we work with the health department. Every time we have a case and we call them, in fact, they just gave back, we gave a very big compliment, and I'll share with everybody, you know, without mentioning other communities, but it essentially said, "We have our act together."
Yes.
So, when we tell them, John Doe tested positive, they ask us a series of questions. Who was he near? We give the list of people. They were all six feet apart. We'll give them, we have it all, we have a scene chart in the cafeteria, you know, on the bus, we have mapped out. In a lot of places, they're not able to pinpoint, you know, who was John Doe near? And so, I don't know. What do you mean, "I don't know"? Well, I don't remember. And then, it, you know, so there could be 100 people, you know, so then, they have to shut that school down, and we're giving them concrete numbers. These three kids who were within six feet of all class, they have to be quarantined. He was not, we were telling names. So, we're giving them concrete information, and then, we're following their recommendations. And so, it could happen, but it's not necessarily, you know, a hard number.
It is a hard number.
There's a waitress used, but there is interpretation of that.
Okay. My next question is, we did see, you know, high school music, which is awesome, going to start for second marking period, but are younger students that worries the bar music program in the future, effort right now? So, when would fourth and fifth grade would get insurance this year, right, or just the...
I think it's fifth, elementary now.
Fifth is not, so that was on there. So, then, I guess my question is just remaining...
Sixth is not.
Yes, my question is just that fifth grade, right?
So, we're going to have a plan for fifth for elementary. They're on a trimester, so their next trimester is going to start until December 9th.
So, the question is, why couldn't we start fifth grade music at the same time as everyone else, being that there are less students in the room? That, you know, I just, if we can look into that and let you know, the trimester, they can wait for a lot longer.
An extra month.
That's the concern.
An extra three weeks. An extra three weeks, maybe. So from November, what do we say?
November 9th.
November 9th, I think the date was December 12th, I think. So it's an extra month, tentatively. It could be moved off, you know, we're still working on a plan for them, but.
I just know fifth graders, they have their instruments that are reading, that they're paid for, that they're, you know, and a month to them is a very long time, where they're still trying to figure out if that's the instrument they want to do or not. And I think that that's a big indicator for our music program. So I just wanted to mention that I would hate to see them have to wait longer time than everybody else in the world. And my last thing, would these numbers for high school, I mean, we have like 40% at least, 42% maybe of our high school students full virtual.
Why? Why other elementary?
Because this is a parent option. So either way, it has its own reasons, I hope.
I have heard from parents that said to me the reason that they're choosing virtual is because they fear their kids are getting more out of the virtual. I don't know that the getting up early, the whole routine, they can still accomplish what they're accomplishing going to school, but.
I think there are much more people at that age to learn virtually than.
They're trying to get ready.
I have a question with it, just to finish my last point.
You have 400 different reasons.
Ah, the first is, I mean, you not accept an answer to any question. Like, I'm curious, do we have more failure set in the first marking period than we have like failures we're curious about?
So we're going for a greater percentage for the end of March, K1 to K2, probably two weeks.
Okay.
That might be for education.
Are we looking at, and I'm sure you probably are, like, Macapin is our tightest bill, I mean, with the, you know, so are we looking at maybe, we went some classes to the high school, if we, you know?
Who has classes?
Like Macapin? Macapin has, does that make sense, my question? You can move the hallway, that's my point, yeah. Just an idea, because when I look at these numbers, which I haven't had a minute to look at for some of this, oh, yeah, I just got this, but, you know, and I'm sure that Liz, you're probably looking at every classroom in the district for the next phase, which would be special education students. But it just, if I look at numbers, it's almost like, wow, we could probably take all the special education classes for my period. But like, just.
So you can't, I don't know how it works for Janet. I can just tell you the specialized, you can't just move a middle school to the high school without getting county approval in that building? And I don't know if they would approve that unless you have some.
That answered my question fully, yes.
It might be easier to come at, without Grandma's, I'm not just keep looking at it, can we do a phased in kind of plan? We're still analyzing that, but.
And I have another question for you, Nicole.
I have to rethink about what I was going to say. Well, to the point that you were making about why so many virtual, because the kids that are 100% virtual, those teachers are dedicated to those kids, right? So it's like, they're literally looking at them face-to-face like when we were all.
This is high school, but they're asking about high school.
Oh, you were asking about high school?
Yeah, remember they're doing live streaming.
Right, okay, never mind. My question is, so I guess, all right, never mind. Because all of the kids, even 100% virtual in high school are livestreamed into?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought there were still some that were 100% virtual, getting dedicated teachers. That's only elementary.
I think Mr. Novak can touch a little bit on that.
That answered my question.
Courtney, does Courtney have a chance? I just also want to say thank you. I think it's a huge balancing act. I think that we're dealing with safety. I think we're dealing with children who want to, and parents who want their children in person. And I want to just be very clear with the community, and I want you to confirm this. We're talking in six weeks or on Monday, we're going to reevaluate when we're going to allow the next phase, which would first be special ed children in Macapin and the high school, and then K1, 2, all in person.
What does it hold on? Well, how are numbers wired Monday?
Okay.
And then we're looking at all those groups.
Okay, and that would be the first phase in?
Those are probably the.
And how soon are we talking?
Well, we'd have to get a plan together. We'd have to amend our return to school plan. I mean, I would think that's going to take, you know, a month or so. So maybe January.
And to get our special ed back in school?
December, January, it's going to take a while to get a plan together.
That would be Macapin and the high school, because right now the elementary special ed are all in five days. We're talking Macapin and the high school.
Or primary grades at the elementary school.
Right.
We have to speak with our attorney as well about can we bring in one grade but not another? Is that an issue with, an equity issue or a potential legal issue?
I'm just asking, because I thought I heard you say that, and I just want to make sure that we're clear with everyone.
We're looking at everything essentially.
Okay.
So if there's brothers and sisters, right? So like I have two boys in the school, they were at different schools different times, but if one of my sons might have tested positive, then both my kids have to be out of school for two years. Obviously, the one that's positive would be. Any other siblings would have to be out of school also?
In a household, yes.
In a household, yes. To the point, that's exactly my point in showing the numbers at the high school and how they link with learning system in full virtual, because our full virtual students and our students in the classroom, many of them do not have their regular teachers. So honestly, if the high school was full virtual, then they could have the directed instruction and then from their regular teachers, you know? So we're paying substitutes and other teachers to cover our staff, who many of them are on leave, and we have 40% of our, 42% of our students full virtual. So thank you for kind of raising those questions, because that's exactly what I was thinking.
I think one of the things that we have to get, you know, put out there right now is that we wanted to put a plan together so that people could see that we're looking to the next stage. Locking somebody into a date right now will be hard. I myself feel very strongly that we have to get our resource kids back in the middle and the high school next. That should be our next step, because their counterparts in the elementary are ready in five days. I think it is a step program. We put some, you know, we may put some kids back and we may have to pull back. It might be, you know, a back and forth kind of thing. And that, you're right, the next stage, look at the elementary and see where we could go. If the goal, hopefully, would be that in my mind, to get to January.
I think it's a huge balancing act. And I think that schools that are full in person, you know, when there is going to be one case, it's going to flatline a whole class, a whole school, whereas in West Milford, it's going to maybe day that child. And that's going to be a huge difference as we go through the winter months.
Yeah, we want to be as sustainable as we can. And as the winter months come, it's much more difficult to be outside because of the winter.
And I think we need to be as transparent to let the public know that we are looking at everything. And there might be, instead of one, you know, Plan A or B, there might be three or four plans that are going to have to come into play because of the different circumstances.
Our student rep has a question.
I know, like you mentioned the music, which is great, but I know our lunch on the go is happening in the music room. So what are you, what are your plans for, if we return to doing music, what are we going to do with the kids who do lunch on the go? And how do you plan on like separating them and making sure that still happens?
I believe they use an auditorium for the music.
Okay.
That's the plan. But we'll do a larger space more big. Yeah, brace it out. I can check with Mr. Strang, but my understanding is the music will be in a larger space.
And then like, if we do happen to close school at any point, do you plan on sports ending as well? I don't know if you would even have this answer at this point, but do you plan on having schools or sports end as well? Or do you think we could still keep sports in play as long as the players are like okay and haven't been near those who have been contacted?
Well, if they're not close contacts, it might not be any reason to cancel sports.
Even if the school is closed?
If the school is closed, we could still offer, in September, we were, if the building was closed, we'd open for virtual, but we had sports, we had practices after school.
Yeah.
So if there's an outbreak in, it could be that team is shut down because it's outbreak with that team, but not that team.
Okay.
So it really depends, and that's part of our discussions with the health department. So if school were to close, you could still offer your co-curricular activities after school, band, music, sports, you know, so long as that wasn't part of the spread.
Amanda, are you running for the Board of Ed in November? Your questions are spot on.
You're going to be a wonderful lawyer.
I just have one last question. It's probably really more for Dan, but are we having PSATs, SATs? I'm concerned, like, I know as of right now, graduation requirements haven't changed. Hopefully, the Governor's Office does change them, because I'm worried about students doing portfolio and all these things. So do we have PSATs, SATs, all?
Yeah, we have, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, is livestream working?
I was waiting for a break in the action, if I could get maybe a five-minute recess.
Okay.
So we can check to see if there's any issues?
Yeah, there seems to be.
There is.
There. I like Lawrence City. We're friends again. I was there.
When we go, when we go in there?
I'm sitting there, working there. Your whole family.
Back to you, Amanda.
Hello, and thanking for allowing me to speak today. My name is Amanda Gerald. I'm president of the West Milford Student Council and the student representative. I would like to start off by addressing some of the positive events that have been able to occur throughout the district. Student council is in the middle of their spirit week. We have been promoting the anti-bullying campaign and Highlander pride and character. Tomorrow, students in Cohort A will have the chance to wear Halloween costumes with the saying that differences may bring us together. Cohort B will dress Friday. Today, we wore our black and gold. Planning events are, of course, very difficult in this time of uncertainty and social distancing, but we are still planning things in hopes that they will be approved and that we will have a better winter in spring. Highlander Band is performing fantastic as usual through their virtual competitions, getting second place on last weekend's competition. They have states on Saturday and nationals next weekend as well. Sports continue to be held and have been able to host their senior nights. The football team beat a very good Paramus team this past Friday, scoring 20 points in six minutes, conquering a favored team. Cross-country took first place in their conference, moving their rank from 20th to eighth in one year. Girl soccer had their first victory against PV with a score of 6-1. Girls tennis has their Halloween tournament tomorrow, and their senior night was a total success with a win and a lot of fun. Varsity girls field hockey is having a great, successful year as well. Coach Provost got her 100th win with varsity, as well as JV hitting 100 wins for Coach Paloozie. With a record of 7-3 and wins against Lakeland and Wayne Hills, field hockey is on track to have another very successful year. High school also has some upcoming events planned as well. The yearbook club is reminding staff and students about a few deadlines, notably portrait retakes on November 17th and 18th, as well as senior sibling pictures during that same window. Emails were sent to students, parents, and staff. For the first time, the yearbook is opening its ad section to the booster clubs and other community members, given how quickly our 2020 graduate experience shifted. The ONGS wants to properly honor our 2021 graduates. Anyone who would like to purchase an ad page can check the website or email Ms. Metcalf. On Thursday, November 19th, West Milford Township High School Arts Department will be holding its ninth annual Empty Bowls Community Meal virtually. The event traditionally held in person raises awareness around hunger issues and raises money for local food pantries by selling handcrafted ceramic bowls and serving soup. The West Milford community is invited to a bowl and soup to-go pickup at the high school auditorium library from 4:30 to 6:30. Tickets are $15. Signs will direct visitors to wait outside, allowing a limited number of people into the space at once. All participants must wear masks and maintain social distancing at all times, and staff will allow visitors to point out a bowl they would like to take home and indicate which prepackaged soup they would like to take with them. Staff will be using gloves and will be the only handlers of the items that will be sent home to the visitors. After the event closes, organizers will host a Google Meet at 7 o'clock, where everyone will be able to share their soup as a community, and participation gifts will be given out to those donors that would like to participate. Lastly, the senior class council plans to sell clothing soon and are aiming to have a Valentine's Day cookie gram sale if food will be allowed. They are also hopeful in their plans to host a field day at the end of the year between the cohorts. Thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight. We are working hard to keep our spirits up and Highlander pride and character strong. Any questions?
Can you give me the date of that empty bowl again? It's early this year.
Yeah, Thursday, November 19th.
Oh, it's November, November 19th.
Ms. Gerald, I have a question for Ms. Gerald Terry. Do you know what kind of soups are going to be there specifically?
I don't know what soups in particular will be there. I can contact Ms. Gallagher and let you know, though.
Thank you. If you can get that to me by 0900 on Friday.
Yes, yes, I will make sure to get that to you.
That would be greatly appreciated.
She always very particular about a soup.
You're good. So you don't know if there's going to be a second one?
Just that one, I believe, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Novak, you're on the air.
Thank you. I'm going to speak about a few topics tonight. A few of them are not on the agenda. I'm going to start off with the update to the hybrid model that we spoke briefly on in Dr. Anamon's presentation. We are moving along and progressing. I think we're, you know, we're just about a month into our implementation of the hybrid model. When I presented about our movement to the hybrid model at the September meeting, we presented on the, you know, the difference between the in-person student and the at-home student and the types of synchronous interaction that they would get. And a reminder again, synchronous, doing things at the same time with the teacher, et cetera. At that time, I referred to our process in the hybrid model as being an evolution of this model and that we would continue to look for and seek additional opportunities for students to interact in, on their at-home day in a synchronous setting. So we are in that process. We have a number of, I've spoken a few times about the grade level collaboration that we have across the district, and I couldn't be prouder of the teachers across the district from building to building with their, you know, administrator by grade level for the time and dedication they're putting in to, you know, really do what's best for kids and investigate all of these possibilities. And, you know, I want to, on behalf of them, I just want to share with the community how difficult it truly is. I've referred to them in a few emails as the hybrid teaching warrior. You know, to have those students in the classroom and those students at home at the same time presents many challenges that unless you're living it, you really can't fathom it. So I just want to, you know, give a shout out to those teachers and, you know, talk about the great job they're doing. On top of that, they're also investigating how to do more. You know, so that's the part I'm most proud of with them is that they are on their own in this process, having these great discussions by grade level about, you know what? We could start doing math synchronous for our at-home students. So there's probably a lot of parents who have seen some of those teachers who have been attempting to increase the amount of synchronous instruction for the at-home learner. Those teachers who are doing that bring that back to their grade level discussion. They share with their colleagues about how it went, and then they have a discussion where more teachers try it. And to me, that's the essence of professional development. We, from the beginning, did not want to be a district that threw everyone into this model that nobody knew how to do. I think we built from a place of experience and a place of knowledge that was considerate of both the students as well as staff ability. And we have seen that staff ability grow each and every day. So, you know, so I talk about the hybrid update. It's really an evolution of the hybrid. It's really an evolution of the hybrid model, and you should see over the next month, a increase of synchronous instruction little by little as we move throughout the hybrid model. We spoke in Dr. Anemo's presentation about safety and the numbers across the state and the look of, you know, things that we need to monitor over the next weeks and months. So we are planning for and acknowledging the desire to move to a next phase where we bring in more students, but we can't guarantee that at this time because we don't know what the, you know, the health and safety situations look like. So as we monitor over the next few weeks, we are also looking to phase in the things that Dr. Anemo spoke about and those people at home who couldn't see on livestream, you know, log in tomorrow when it's posted to see that information. But while we're investigating those scenarios, we are also looking to increase and improve upon our hybrid model. So we've got a lot of different plans going on. Somebody from the board mentioned about having, I think it was Mrs. Romeo, but needing to have three or four different plans. That's what we have. We've got, we've got a plan for, you know, all of the scenarios and bottom line, we want to do what's best for kids, we want to improve upon the hybrid model, and we want to be ready for what the next model is, you know, when the time is right. That's moving on from that. Also, there was a honeywell that came out today. I wanted to talk about switching to assessment and some pre-pandemic goals and things that we've spoken about in the past, like Lincoln and the NJSLA State Assessment. A honeywell went out today from Dr. Matlos, our testing coordinator, in regard to the Start Strong Assessment, which is a, it's a standardized assessment similar to the NJSLA that we are going to be administering in our schools throughout the month of, throughout the month of November. It's not as lengthy or, you know, it's not as lengthy or cumbersome as the NJSLA. It's a 45-minute assessment, should be completed within a single class period. And in our elementary schools, this is going to take place on November 10th and 11th. And at the middle school and high school, it's going to be on the days of November 16th through 20th. And I'm just going to read a quick blurb of what the state described these tool, this assessment as. The assessment tool provides educators with an early indication of the level of support students may need for this year. It may also identify some potential gaps in student understanding of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So the state created this assessment with the goal in mind of helping educators, helping us determine some of the gaps that developed from what the students of New Jersey and beyond experienced in the spring with, you know, health-related closures, et cetera. So we're going to get that feedback immediately as soon as we have the test. Referring to one of our pre-pandemic goals, luckily, we had sort of embraced data analysis as a district over the last two or three years, and our staff is well-equipped to give this assessment and be able to take a look at that data the same way they've been using Lincoln for the last two years and, you know, make that actionable in their classrooms to, you know, select goals and objectives to help fill those gaps. So we're, I won't say excited to have a state assessment, but I think that information is going to be valuable.
The result of the state says we're not going to.
Yeah, this doesn't, that's why we're able to get this information quickly because it doesn't go to the state. It doesn't get, it's not comparative data to other districts. It is just, you know, individual information about one student and which standards they haven't mastered and which standards they have, and helps us prescribe, you know, an individual education for those students. Mrs. Dwyer?
Could you give us a brief description of what your plans are and tell us how involved the staff is in this process?
What plans are you referring to?
You said you have plans in motion, and I would just like to know, you know, a description, like what are those plans? What is, can you describe them a little bit so that?
I believe we're presenting those ideas at our next education committee.
Okay, good. And is any of the staff involved in this?
The staff's involved in everything that we do. In my previous statement, I referred to the collaborative effort, and I'm speaking right now for kindergarten.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
November 10th and 11th, elementary, the Start Strong Test. The tentative Tuesday, the Wednesday, the 11th is a Wednesday, so would it be A and then B testing?
At this time, that's the proposed schedule, but they are, they are in the process, this is a tentative proposal, and they are in the process of looking at the A-B designation and what that means in November. One other, one other area that I want to speak about, the, again, with pre-pandemic discussions, we have changed our REAL program to a program called LEAD, and that is something that typically in West Milford was a program that was used in sixth grade to talk about drug awareness and student safety, et cetera, with the West Milford Police Department and the West Milford Municipal Alliance. We've got a few things in place this year, you know, that kind of builds off of that and also takes into account students who missed this opportunity in the past. So one, one process that we're going to begin this year is the fifth-grade LEAD program. That's going to begin relatively soon. We're in the process of discussing with Sergeant Clu from the West Milford Police Department in regard to how that process is going to begin with our fifth graders. There's also a program from the Municipal Alliance called We're Not Buying Into It, which offers a six lesson program that they have been in communication with our MACAB principal today. That's going to be in place for our sixth grade students in their health classes, starting most likely in the second marking period. Luckily, the timing of it is fantastic because we haven't had, we haven't had health classes yet, so our health classes are going to be engaged in these workshops. And I have, it's a six lesson program, 40 minutes each lesson, so it fits perfectly into our period structure. The lessons are media and advertising, underage drinking and pop culture, marijuana and social media, prescription drug prevention, bullying in social media, and media circles of influence, and then the closing of the, closing of the program. So that is for our sixth graders who did not participate in LEAD last year due to the health-related closing. There's also a group who we are working on a plan for, and I will have that planned for you also at the Ed Committee, Mrs. Dwyer, in regard to our seventh graders who began the process of REAL last year and may have had one or two sessions before the health-related closure made that come to an end abruptly. That's a group, you know, our current seventh graders who were last year's sixth graders who didn't finish the program, so we are working to also address that because they didn't get a complete process.
I have a question, Ms. on this program for the sixth graders, We're Not Buying Into It. Who would be teaching those lessons? Through the Police Department or?
No, it's, it's through an organization.
Sector for Prevention and Counseling.
Thank you.
You still are tender. He did. That's our report.
It's our report from the minute.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. So not you.
So I'll stop now, and then you can continue. Sorry.
You did a great job.
Okay. Well, if you have any like from your meeting last night, please feel free. I apologize.
You asked for the report.
Good. And last but not least, I know I, you know, gave a shout out to our, to our teaching staff. Anytime you say thank you in a public setting, you inevitably leave somebody out, so I don't intend to leave anybody out. And everybody that I've been working with across the district has been doing a great job, but there is one particular group that I don't think's ever been thanked in a board meeting before, and that is our district substitutes. We have people across the district who have never been putting these settings before, and they're jumping in, they're taking over, challenging coursework, whether it's a kindergarten is, you know, can be as challenging as an AP physics class in some regards. So we've got amazing subs across the district who have been not only helping us in person, but also putting themselves on camera and going live in the hybrid model. So we want to say thank you to them, along with the rest of our staff. And the last thing I want to talk about is the, early in November, we're going to be releasing dates for parent, parent training in a variety of topics. First and foremost is Google Classroom. November is typically a month for parent interaction, where we've had parent-teacher conferences, parent visitation days, you know, et cetera. And so we're going to capitalize on November as being a parent interaction month and offering some opportunities for parents who've now lived, you know, September of all virtual, a October of hybrid, and, you know, all the challenges that come with interacting with Google Classroom and all the different, our teachers are growing by leaps and bounds with the types of tools that they're using, and they might be leaving some of our parents behind, you know, so we want our parent, our teachers to continue to learn and grow and do what's best for kids, but we also have to acknowledge that some of our parents at home need some support if they are supporting our students at home. So early November, we'll be sharing dates. It'll probably be scheduled throughout the time period of November 9th through, up until before Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. May I ask a quick question? Sure. Okay. Liz, there's been a lot of discussion, I guess, I haven't heard too much, about the special ed kids coming back into the high school to the resource room five days a week. What is your stand on that?
So I stand closely with Dr. Anemo, saying that I think we need to, I think that it's a very priority as well to try to bring those students in as many days a week as they can, right? For some students right now, it's working, for others, it's not. And we knew that, and we know that all along. But at the same time, I think we have to make sure that we analyze it for safety or overall, like should we have a transition plan in by grade legally where we are for compliance and equity across the board? So we just need a little more time to keep planning for it, but I don't, I would definitely have probably a more confident answer for you with where I stand at the November committee meeting and then, you know, hopefully at the board meeting.
Okay, thank you. One last question, sorry. If the only thing in parent-teacher conferences, I love the idea of the parent, but are parent-teacher conferences going to be scheduled for November also? They'll run as?
Virtually. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Francisco? Well, you're next. I'm just following you. You have the board minutes from the September 22nd meeting.
I need a motion.
I'll move to approve the September 22nd workshop regular meeting and executive session minutes.
And I need a second? A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My president, the board, you could steal some of us, too. I just want to thank all the staff, the teachers, the support staff. Maybe I say it every month, the parents, because we're all in this together and I think that everybody's doing their best at getting through this, and I want to thank them and let them know that we're behind you and we're trying to do whatever we can to make this work. I also want to say, even if anything came out of the COVID problem, the grade plan, the grade level plan for our district is a good plus for our teachers and for our students because now everybody seems to be getting to that same page, something that for years was kind of lacking in some of the schools. And I want to say thank you, Ms. for working on it and for bringing it together because it's really an important part of our school, and it's really an important part of making this hybrid work. So thank you very much. That would be my report. Moving on to public comment, this portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpired. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full names, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected and identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak?
Saying no, I make a motion to quote a public comment.
Hold on, in favor?
All right, just making a few amendments to the agenda before we adopt it. The first one, on page four, Personnel and Student Affairs, number three, that resolution's going to be pulled. The second one is Personnel, is page seven, Personnel/Student Affairs, Resolution Number 26 is also going to be pulled. And the last one, also on page seven, Personnel/Student Affairs, number 28, we're going to pull this resolution and replace it with the Hand Carry 28. There's enough changes in there, I want to just write a cleaner resolution.
Alex, I'm sorry, what was the first one that you said?
First one was Personnel/Student Affairs, number three.
Okay, thank you.
So it's three and 26 are pulled, 28 is pulled but replaced with the new 28 in the blue. That's all.
And then there's two Hand Carries?
Well, there's a Hand Carry 57, 58, which is fine, and then there's the other Hand Carry, which is a, the new 28.
I'll make a motion to adopt these.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to Education, Mrs. Dwyer.
Okay, I move to approve the following exempt items, one through four.
Second.
Any discussions? It's not. We'll call Mrs. Francisco. This is Rino.
Yes.
This is Seaman.
Yes.
This is Schellmann.
Yes.
This is Ockins.
Yes.
This is Romeo.
Yes.
This is Conroy.
Yes.
This is Flip.
Yes.
This is Vanda.
Yes.
Personnel/Student Affairs, Mrs. Chris?
Okay.
Good luck. Sorry.
I would like to move items one through 50 each. Can I do the Hand Carries all together? Okay. Taking out item number three and item number 26 and replacing Hand Carry number 28.
Need a second? Jason? All right, any discussion?
Kate, Ben, Ray. I actually pay those many quality, great staff members either retiring or leaving the district. Thank you, good luck in the future. But out of all of that, there's one that was an amazing teacher to me. Um, and out of all of them, there's one that was an amazing teacher to me. Um, and she has done a spectacular job at Highlander. Um, and Mrs. Brenda Ludwig is caring, works hard, always has, and I'm sad to see her go. But I want to say thank you to her. She was a great teacher and really has done great things for our district, so thank you, Brenda. Greg?
Yeah, I, I wanted to echo that, about Brenda, congratulations, thank you for all you've done, teaching, uh, or helping my boys in particular. Also, Linda vaguely, like, uh, like, say thanks for all you've done, uh, in Mackin. And then the last guy, John Fink, in Mackin, some of you have had John Fink as a teacher, that's how long he's been teaching.
You just dated him, I wasn't going to say that.
I probably, I think I had John Fink as a teacher, too, Alex. I'm kidding, no. My brother did have him, he was one of, uh, he was, uh, my brother's, uh, varsity basketball coach, so congratulations to Coach Fink and all the other folks on the list.
I was just going to echo this, and, and Mr. Barnout also, um, for all the, uh, the work that you've done in our district, um, always was very impressive. And of course, Fink, I was not going to throw him under the bus about how long he's been around, but, uh, being that he was one of my teachers and that my, my children have had the chance to have him, um, not only has he just been great and kind of an iconic person in, in the schools, he's been really great in the community and, and a lot, involved in a lot of our sports and programs, and definitely going to miss him, but congratulations and good luck to all.
Well, I, I just want to reiterate that this is kind of a bittersweet, sweet agenda because there are a lot of people that are on this list that I've known for a very long time, and they will surely be missed, but I wish them well and totally see where they're going, and I hope that their future is, is, is bright, so, um, I just want to thank them for that. And if there's anyone else, nothing else, we should move on, uh, roll forward. Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
This girl, Trinkie?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Sadly, yes. Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Zandberg?
Yes.
Operations and finance, Mrs. Greenow?
Yes. I'd like to move items one through 13 under operations finance.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, uh, thank you, uh, for the donation, uh, from, uh, speakers in memory of Rita, for the culinary department, that was really, uh, a great gift, so we do appreciate that, thank you.
Any other discussion? I, I just want to note on here, item number five, which is, uh, the purchase of the, uh, HP Pro Books for the teachers. I want to thank you, Barb and Robert, for your work in getting these for the district. This is the finance tool needed, and that's something that we've identified through the CARES Act, correct?
And the virtual teachers are already done using it?
Great, that's, so that's a, all right. Good, good plus through the CARES Act. Greg, do you have something?
Do we have an idea when the rest of the staff will be getting those? We're, we're working on it, uh, right now. We have about, uh, 330 of the students, so we want to make sure that, uh, we have a good, solid platform for those, so that we don't cause any more problems in the way we're solving.
But do you think by the end of the month they would have them?
By the end of this month? No.
November, November.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, we should get, we're going to start, like, with the, with the high school and Mackin is doing secret is learning, and I hope that we can get them for those two.
We, we can get them out as they're ready to go out. We don't have to wait till the last one is ready, we can kind of get them out now. Yeah. Till the batch to go out, we'll get them out, and then we'll keep, uh, working on the rest.
Okay, um, Terry?
Okay, um, are we still, uh, working with aquatic for our hockey program? Is that still?
Yes, that, that was a two-year agreement.
Okay, good.
So this is year two.
I see that we're working with Jefferson for bowling. Um, who's the head coach in that one? Is it a Jefferson person or?
Uh, no, the, uh, no, which number are you looking at, Terry?
I'm looking at number?
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you.
No, that's, that's just West Milford. There's some transportation agreements we have with Jefferson Township for number nine and number 10, but they're not connected to bowling.
All right, so it's West Milford?
It's just our own bowling team.
Oh, okay, it's our own, so they're just going to be transported together?
No, I think that's something separate.
No, they're, they're, they're separate entirely. Um, we, we've, we've had a coed team, boy, girl, now we're going to have separate boys and girls teams for bowling. It's, it's, it's not connected to, uh?
Oh, all right, okay. I, I don't know why I put Jefferson in there.
It's the one right above it, but it's, it's not connected.
Thanks. Any other discussion? If not, local, board? Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Pensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stilman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Zandberg?
Yes.
I'd like to move, uh, item 14 under operations finance.
Second. Any discussion? If not, local, board?
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. Stilman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Drone?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Brink?
Yes.
I'd like to move item 15 under operations finance.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Local? Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. O'Pensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Stilman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Brink?
Yes.
I'd like to move item 16 under operations finance.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Local? Oh, you guys discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Local? Mrs. Greenow?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Pensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Stilman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Brink?
Yes.
I'd like to move items 17 and 18 under operations finance.
I'll second.
Anything? Um, local? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion? Local?
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mr. O'Pensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stilman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Zandberg?
Yes.
Policy, Mrs. Romeo?
Yes, I'd like to motion two through, uh, numbers one through 17, policy.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, local?
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stilman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Pensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Zandberg?
Yes.
Negotiations, Mr. O'Pensky?
Yeah, I'd like to move, uh, item number one.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Mrs. uh, Mrs. Francisco, for working on that. Local?
Mr. O'Pensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenow?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Stilman?
Yes.
Mrs. Vender?
Yes.
Committee reports, park recreation, any reports?
No.
Safety committee, um, as Dr. Anon said before, we're going to have a virtual meeting on November 12th, so, um, you can, you can, yeah, from that. Superintendent roundtable?
Thursday.
Yeah, that can be in Westbrook, in the music room.
Music downstairs.
Right, music room, and they'll be able to enter through the side door. Uh, the state campus school board and New Jersey school board, uh, we have New Jersey school boards coming tomorrow night for our bulletin, our meetings start at six. Uh, I hope everybody will be here, and, uh, I don't know if anybody got a chance to do any of the virtual workshop meetings online. Uh, they will be online for a little bit, right?
They will, I believe.
Yeah, so there are, you can access them. Uh, the state, I haven't been able to connect when they have their virtual meetings, so hopefully.
They were hard to get into.
They were hard to get in, they were hard to get in. So, um, that's my report there. Legislative?
I have no report.
Any technology oversight?
Uh, the biggest thing we talked about already, which was, uh, computers, um, for the teachers and using some of those CARES Act ones that, um, those in that.
Township and the board, uh, we met, uh, on day? When was it? Monday. Monday. Um, the, I think what we took away from there was good conversation. Town hall is still closed in the P A, the P A L building because they're working on ventilation systems for both, um, the Farrell Field, uh, complex, I guess they finished the soccer field, they were, they've been upgraded, so, or that, that came up in the discussion. And we have another meeting set for November 9th again, and that also is a virtual meeting that we have. Um, West Milford Municipal Alliance.
We had a meeting, um, last night, virtually. Mr. Novak talked a lot about what we talked about. Um, they, um, are going, they talked about the lead program, um, they also talked about the We're Not Buying It program for our sixth graders, um, they're funding it. I think this, this municipal alliance is such a wonderful organization, I can't talk enough about them. Um, they just had Scott's Trot, um, and they just are so good at doing different events for our community and for our children. Um, so, Mr. Novak talked a lot about what I was going to say, so, good chat. Um, he, they also, um, mentioned that if there's anything that we could think of to, um, that we would want them to, um, do, they are more than willing to listen, if there's any education for parents that they could help, um, they would be more than willing to, um, to do programs with us. So when you mentioned November is parent, um, month, I think that they would be more than willing to join forces with you, um, and they're just, they're just fantastic group of people.
Kate?
Um, just to add to that, absolutely, the, um, West Milford Municipal Alliance, Kathy Gert is working so hard to bring prevention to our district. The funding for these programs is amazing, and they lost funding, but these families is important. Uh, I also wanted to just give a, it's a shout out to one of our teachers who set up the Scott's Trot and did an amazing job to help stop the stigma and, um, you know, just bring awareness to mental health and addiction and talk about it and, and surround the community and raise money for treatment and for help. And, uh, that's Charlene Papas at EGL, she did an amazing job this past weekend, and it is so nice to see the staff come together and the community come together for stopping the stigma of mental health awareness. Um, and the last thing, uh, was probably more a Parks and Rec thing, but I don't know if anyone saw, that the library in Parks and Rec put a book together, an outdoor book down by Nenseyopan. Has anyone seen that?
Oh, the storybook, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I saw pictures of it, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, it's very cool.
Yeah, that, that's, I, I did, I mean, I, somebody actually had pictures of it.
I waited for somebody to mention it, since someone did, like, we, you know, like, I was enjoying, it's a younger age storybook, but, um, I really thought that would be cool for an outdoor, even, you know, Westbrook's right here, this is very neat.
Yeah, yeah. They also, the municipal alliance also is funding Heroes and Cool Kids, um, so, you know, they're, they're just doing so much to help, like, with, their focus is prevention, um, they're highlighting mental health awareness, and, um, you know, I just think that they're such, they're just doing great things.
Okay, thank you. All right, old business, anyone have anything under old business?
I, um, so, I guess this is old business, and I should have asked it probably before with the, uh, or Alex, the president, she did. Um, I, I understand and I agree with the need to get special education in. What about our encore students? Like, okay, so two questions, I guess. One, can you explain what the encore program is quickly? And two, can you tell me what the plan is to get that program back up there?
Your encore program, uh, is in, and, uh, like, a better description would be our basic skills, uh, for students in need of specific support, can't hear me. Uh, our, our encore program is, um, for student support. We, um, have a variety of funding for our encore program, which was, leads to some of the challenges that we have in this, in this current, um, in the current climate, with staffing concerns. Uh, we had to, um, relocate some of our staff members from our encore program, just to describe it, you know, you asked for a little description of it. Uh, encore program would have been in grades, uh, two through five, um, a variety of in-class and out-of-class support for students who qualify for the services. And to qualify for the services, um, it's, you need to have an academic need in mathematics or, or language arts through a variety of, um, through a variety of measures, NJSLA, standardized assessments, Fanta-Spinell benchmark assessment, teacher recommendation, that sort of thing, that's how a student would qualify for services. Um, we also refer to our K through two, um, students who work with our reading specialist as, as part of our, uh, part of our encore program. Uh, so currently, we have students who qualify for encore reading room in K through two as five-day students. Um, at the, uh, next level, grades three through five, those students are, um, you know, part of our hybrid model. We are looking, and I think, you know, Mrs. Dwyer asked about plans, um, one of the, one of the plans for the next phase is that discussion about our encore students and also our students of, with 504s, um, our students who are in our, uh, INRS system, intervention and referral services. So we have a number of students in grades three through five that we know need our support and that we need to get back to. So we're having individual conversations now, and, and Dr. McQuade often, uh, refers to, you know, when a question like this, it's not a broad stroke, it's an individual basis. Uh, so we're having, uh, individual conversations now about students who could potentially qualify for five-day, um, services through encore 504 or intervention and referral services. Um, so that's, you know, like I said, so best about plan, that's part of one of the plans that we're, we're talking about, uh, at this time. Um, also, um, we, I think what your question was, was getting at was that, at the moment, we don't have, um, that outside service, we don't have the additional staff member in place to service those, uh, to service those, those encore kids. Um, that we, we are approving, uh, a few tonight, we have postings that have been, um, placed, we are just in the process of interviewing and, and trying to find the people. The people just aren't available at this point in time to return the program, um, the at this point in time to return the program the way that it was. But we do have a plan, and, you know, now we're getting specific about the plan, that it wasn't going to do tonight, we have a few hirings in place that are going to be able to service our Title I schools because of the funding that requires that, we also have a plan for some potential hires that are going to be able to service our students in non-title, non-title schools as well. But again, a lot of it is depending on staffing, we have a good start, and then we do have an idea for how we can get back to providing that service, as well as, you know, moving forward with that next step of bringing more students in five days a week, so we're in that, we're in that process now.
Okay, thank you so much, but if I read it correctly, so if you're K through two Encore, you are in the Delta Group?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
No, K through two.
K through two students who qualify for reading room services.
五个
Right.
Okay, thank you. Is there, I'm sorry, is there a way that we could perhaps offer a teacher a stipend in, to offer tutoring services for children who qualify in the morning, in the afternoon, after school, are there funds to help these very needy children to do something more for them? Is that something that we could talk about?
That's, that's something that we've discussed for the potential next step, so our first attempt is to get people in the positions, we have 3.5 Encore teachers posted, and we have three intervention specialists posted for Encore support.
But our own teachers could be offering tutoring before school and after school?
Correct.
For a stipend?
Right, right. So. But I'm asking specifically for the children who aren't getting any services, your three, four, and five students, your 504 students. I don't want to say they're not getting any services, you know, that's, that's.
Not as much as the K1 and K2 where you're not.
Agreed, but they are, you know, their needs are being addressed and their needs are known, and the teachers are applying those strategies, you know, we've been talking about differentiated instruction for a number of years, but again, the additional person in the room is still something we're looking to fulfill.
Any other old business?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And new business, anyone have anything under new business?
Seeing none, I make a motion to close new business.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment? This portion of the meeting?
This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the Board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operations of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the Chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged, and the Board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have legal, have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The Board is not responsible and is not liable for any comment made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak? If not?
Seeing none, I make a motion to close all public comment.
Second.
Terry? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion for executive session, do we have an executive session tonight?
One question.
Okay, can we?
We're not taking action from now.
No.
So can we adjourn?
We're not going to take action. Are we? We're going to have an executive session, but we're not coming back to take action.
You're not taking action tonight? I wish that you did.
Can we adjourn from executive session, or no, we have to adjourn in public?
You should adjourn.
Okay, okay, but we will not be taking action, so I need a motion?
Okay, act 849 P M.
Eight thirty.
Oh, eight thirty-nine, sorry.
No, thirty-nine.
I move to go into executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege.
And any, I need a second?
We will return when.
But we won't be taking action, we're just returning to adjourn. I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Executive session.
Mrs. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Stillman?
Here.
Mrs. Flyer?
Here.
Mrs. Fritz?
Here.
Mrs. Greenow?
Here.
Mr. Ochinski?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Zandai? Here. I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night.
You.
Yes, four o'clock.
Here, here?
Down.